Hello, getting ready to start the county commission meeting. Just read them. You can talk about it. Uh, I called this Genesee County Board of Commissioners meeting order at five thirty P M on Wednesday, September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Gatzinger.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuzino.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
Commissioner Flouelli.
Present.
All right, thank you. We will have our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Dale Wayhill.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, I think it's fair to say that our country is in a tumultuous time, and uh, when that occurs, I look to our history for both solace and inspiration. I have two quotes I'm going to read, uh, from President Abraham Lincoln, and then I'll do a prayer. "I am loath to close. We are not enemies, but friends. We must not be enemies. Though passion may have strained it, must not, though passion may have strained it, must not break our bonds of affection. The mystic chords of memory stretching from every battlefield and every patriot grave to every living heart and hearthstone all over this broad land will yet swell the chorus of the Union, when again touched, as surely they will be, by the better angels of our nature." That was from the first inaugural address by Abraham Lincoln eighteen sixty-one. "With malice toward none, with charity for all, with firmness in the right as God gives us to see the right, let us strive on to finish the work we are in, to bind up the nation's wounds, to care for him who have, who have shall have born the, who, who shall have borne the battle, and for his widow and his orphan, to do all which may achieve and cherish a just and lasting peace among ourselves and with all nations." Second inaugural address eighteen sixty-five. Let us pray. Dear Lord, in times of divi- of division, when voices grow louder and hearts and minds grow more distant, may you help us to pause and reflect on our common purpose. Let us remember that behind every belief is a person shaped by experience, by both joys and by losses. We are all mosaics, formed in part of our past experiences and by our daily experiences in the many diverse communities of which we are part. May we seek to listen, not to argue, but to understand. We may choose curiosity over contempt, questions over assumptions. Let us find the courage to sit with discomfort, to admit what we do not know, and to see the humanity even in those with whom we deeply disagree. As human beings, we will not always agree, but in disagreement, may we still recognize our shared longing to be heard, to be safe, and to belong to something bigger than ourselves. Let us walk forward not with perfect certainty, but with humili- humility, not with judgment, but with an earnest willingness to connect with others different from us, and in doing so, may we build mutual respect and understanding. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wayhill. It's our first order of business we have before us to prove over the meeting minutes from our previous meeting, September tenth, twenty twenty-five, has been moved by Commissioner Winfrey, supported by Commissioner Avery. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, uh, we have come to our public speaking, um, uh, portion of our meeting. If there's anyone who wishes to, uh, uh, um, have addressed from the public, please come forward at this time. Uh, if there are multiple individuals, feel free to line up over to your right, our left, and if you would state your name and your city, village, or township of residence, uh, for the record, that will be greatly, greatly appreciated. Uh, the time, a lot of time that you have to, uh, for your comments will be two minutes. When you hear, uh, the beep, that's the end of the two minutes, and at that time, I'll just ask that you conclude your remarks at that time. Thank you.
Do I need to turn? Oh, it's already on.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Pam Howd. I'm an employee of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. I'm an environmental education specialist and environmental scientist. And I'm here today to tell you about a environmental, radon awareness, environmental health fair that'll take place in Lyndon, Michigan, October twenty-seventh, one thirty to three thirty, at the Losi Senior Center. It's a labor of love due to, um, everybody is touched by cancer. I guess probably not a family here that doesn't have someone that suffered it. And radon gas is, is colorless, odorless, and can penetrate through concrete, and it can come up through sump water or groundwater. And because of that, it's, it accounts for probably one-third of all the cancers out there that are unknown. One-third is occupational, one-third is, is behavioral, smoking and such. The other is the unknown, and that might be radon. So, for that reason, I've sponsored and will have Genesee County Public Health. The Environmental Health Division is bringing their sanitarians to discuss wells, water wells, septic sewer. And they're also bringing the Veterans Administration Affairs, um, and also, public health nurse will be there to talk about vaccines. The Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy will have radon specialists there, drinking water specialists, and, um, myself. And then the Department of Health and Human Services is bringing toxicologists to talk about cancer, the effects of cancer, um, chemicals that can cause cell prevention and awareness. And the Michigan Cancer Found Society is going to have a specialist to talk about prevention, treatment, and the rest. I have a handout for each of you, and I hopefully have enough for the audience as well. And that's it. Thank you very mu- very, very much.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Crystal Pepperdine. I live at two five one seven Delaware Avenue, four eight five oh six. I have been a homeowner in the city of Flint for twenty-three years, and I am also the executive director and founder of Flint Handmade, a very small arts nonprofit that does receive funding from the Arts and Culture Millage through Greater Flint's Arts Council. I was here at the meeting when the cultural center made their presentation, and I thought there were a few additional topics that might be of interest to the commissioners to add to that. Something that I don't think that was conveyed very well was the fact that there is an economic impact to supporting arts and culture in our community. Arts and culture is the lifeblood of a community. If you have a community with nothing to do, nothing to see, nowhere to go, that is not a place that people want to visit, and that is not a place that people want to live. As an example, I go to productions at the Clio Cast and Crew, which is in Commissioner, uh, Kuzino's district. And when I go, I take my family of six, and we get pizza at Twins. And then we go to Goodwill and buy some stuff there. And so, not only is arts and culture beneficial in and of itself as a part of our humanity, as a part of our society, but there is an economic impact that benefits our community. People want to live in places where there's something fun to do. And what does that do? Increases homeownership, it increases apartment building ownership, and that increases property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Jackie Metcalf, and I live in the four eight five zero seven, or a zip code. Um, and I also work at the Flint Children's Museum, and I've been there for twenty-five years. Uh, we, um, as Crystal Pepperdine said, uh, the arts and cultural, um, and humanities is super important to this community. Um, for us, I know, we bring in field trips from all over the county, um, and from the Flint area, but also from Clio and Fenton and Swartz Creek, Davison, and all of those different areas. They come to our space to experience, um, programs such as anything from petting zoos to phone parties to, um, you know, rocket science, just right now, we have Mission to Space. But they, this is like their first introduction to an educational museum experience, right? This builds the love that they build upon, um, for other museums and their interest for learning and growing. And that education, we find, is super important, especially for our preschoolers, because we serve birth to eight-year-olds. And we feel like, um, getting them, when they're young, to learn how to, you know, just play and learn through playing and exploration actually builds that curiosity for lifelong love of learning. And so, I just wanted to speak on behalf of that, and I also wanted to say thank you for having me today, because, I mean, we're, we are so thankful for this community.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ron Palmgren, uh, four 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 nine Sunset Boulevard in Burton, Grand Blank, Michigan, mailing address. Uh, I'm one of your current, uh, Genesee County Board of Canvassers members, representing the Republican Party. I think an extension of my term is on the agenda. I just wanted to let you know I'm here. I'll be available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any additional members of the public who wish to address this body? Any additional speakers? Seeing no additional speakers, public comment is now closed. Next before us, we have our communications. Mister, um, Conklin from Genesee County District Library, I believe that he will be rescheduling another time to come speak. He's unable to be present today. Uh, our next communication is E P twenty-five dash zero zero nine, approval of an emergency purchase order request, Echor Mechanical, an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-six cent. It's my understanding from Mister Freeman that no action is needed on that one. Will you give a little context?
Yep, I believe, and Ray, if you're back there, correct me, I'm wrong, but these were for sumps in the, um, at the Genesee County Jail, correct? Yep.
All right. Any questions or comments about that communication? All right, seeing none. Next, we have before us, uh, E P two-five dash zero one zero, approval of an increase to the blanket purchase order to M, uh, Aramar for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-five for the annual food services to the inmates of Genesee County jails. My understanding that action is not needed on this one as well. Mister Freeman, will you speak to this one?
Yeah, this was for increased food usage. Is somebody here from the Sheriff's Office? Captain Kenimer.
Thank you. Thank you. Please say your name for, for the record.
Captain Kenimer from the Sheriff's Office. So, this is, goes to provide the food for the inmates. Uh, if we have a larger, um, inmate population, the cost goes up a little bit. Uh, the quality of it, uh, is a topic that, uh, we focus on at the Sheriff's Office, so we've increased the quality of the food a little bit. Uh, just to give you, for instance, we went away from a, what they call a breakfast beverage, which is like powdered milk, to actual milk. Um, it provides comfort for the inmates, calms inmates down, uh, and it's a much better product to produce.
Any questions? Commissioner Kuzino.
What was the increase, the amount?
Uh, I don't have that off the top of my head. Uh, Crystal, do you know? I'm sorry, what? Forty-five thousand.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
I have Commissioner Gatzinger.
When you say a blanket purchase order, what's that mean?
It allows us to spend it throughout the fiscal year.
You can add to the forty-five thousand, or?
No, it's up to the forty-five.
Any additional questions, Commissioner Gatzinger? All right. Any additional questions, discussions? Thank you, Captain. Next before us, we have the appointments, and, uh, these appointments, uh... The appointments we have before us are unique tonight, because they are not appointments that, um, that we are able to take through our normal appointment process in terms of putting them out to the public and receiving applications. It's my understanding that there are laws that, uh, govern and dictate, uh, how selections are made or nominations are made. And so, before we go into those that are nominated for, uh, one appointment to the Democratic, uh, um, one appointment of a Democratic member to the Board of County Canvassers for a term expiring, um, ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-nine, as well as, uh, one appointment of a Republican member to the Board of County Canvassers for a term expiring ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-nine. Before we move those forward, um, and determine our pleasure, I'd like to bring the county clerk to kind of speak to this item. Uh, it originated in his office, was added to the agenda outside of our appointments process, but I think there's some rationale as to why.
Good evening, Commissioners. Just a little bit of background for you and the public. Uh, the Board of County Canvassers is the appointed body that certifies every election that we run in Genesee County. Uh, their duties include going through, uh, the poll books and the procedures that happen at all two-hundred-and-six of our precincts throughout Genesee County in the election. Uh, canvassers are appointed to four-year terms, and per state statute, each political, each of the two top-tier political parties, which in our case currently is the Democratic Party and Republican Party, submits three names for appointment for the staggered four-year terms. So, before us, you have two, uh, one Democrat, one Republican, two of the four members. And two years, we'll be doing this again for the other two members. Uh, the process is spelled out that the, um, in our case, we are a little bit unique. Uh, in the last redistricting for congressional seats, uh, as many of you know, we now have two different congressional districts in Genesee County. And statute stipulates when there's more than one congressional district in a county, it is the congressional district that puts forth the names from each party. Uh, so both the, uh, Republican, the chairs of both of those Republican congressional districts and the chairs of both of the Democratic congressional districts agreed on a set of names that they are to submit to the county clerk no later than September first. That is how we've got the names that are before you. Both parties are asking to reappoint their incumbents. On the Democratic side, it's, uh, Sharon Reeves, and on the Republican side, it's Mister Ron Palmgren, who you've heard from a little bit earlier. Um, Ms. Reeves has been serving for a handful of terms on this board, and, uh, Mister Palmgren was actually appointed to fill a vacancy. Uh, when there's a vacancy on the board, that appointment is made similarly. The parties submit names, but the county clerk, uh, selects from those names. Uh, so we're asking to keep those, uh, incumbent appointments in, as they're doing a phenomenal job. They work really well together in a bipartisan manner, um, and there is a timeline to get these to us. So, we met that September first deadline from the parties. Uh, now it is on to you to appoint the members to the Board of Canvassers. I'd be more than happy to answer any specific questions you have about the appointment process or about the role of the canvassers.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, uh, we'll vote, um, in the sequence that we normally would for other appointments. Uh, Madam Clerk, we are voting at this time with no other discussion, um, or questions for the approval of a one, uh, one appointment of a Democratic member to the Board of County Canvassers for a term expiring ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-nine. Uh, Mister Shoemaker, would you like to read the names, or are you okay with me reading?
You can.
All right. So, the Democratic, uh, nominated candidates are Sharon Reeves, incumbent, Grace Turner, and Art Reyes the second. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Sharon Reeves.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Sharon Reeves.
Commissioner Gatzinger.
Sharon Reeves.
Commissioner Brown.
Sharon Reeves.
Commissioner Avery.
Sharon Reeves.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Reeves.
Commissioner Kuzino.
Reeves.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Reeves.
Commissioner Flouelli.
Reeves.
Sharon Reeves has the votes.
Will you call the vote number, um, just?
Nine zero.
All right. So, nine zero, Sharon Reeves has been appointed, um, to the Democratic member seat on the Board of County Canvassers. Okay. So, uh, the chair will entertain a motion at this time to move Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two-two-five-one, appointing Sharon Reeves to Democratic member to the Board of County Canvassers for a term expiring ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-nine. Thank you, Brian. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Now, we have before us Resolution twenty twenty-five, two-two-five-two, approval of an appointment of a Republican member to the Board of County Canvassers for a term expiring ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-nine. The names of those nominated include, I hope I pronounced these right, Ron Palmgren, incumbent Brenda Barker, as well as Rob, um, I don't want to mispronounce his name, but it starts with a W, it's included. Wascoviak. Thank you so much. All right. Um, any discussion, any comments? Seeing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Uh, Ron Palmgren.
Commissioner Gatzinger.
Palmgren.
Commissioner Brown.
Ron Palmgren.
Commissioner Avery.
Palmgren.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Palmgren.
Commissioner Kuzino.
Palmgren.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Palmgren.
Commissioner Flouelli.
Palmgren.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Palmgren.
Nine votes for Ron Palmgren.
Thank you so much. Um, at, Mister Ron Palmgren has received nine votes. Uh, at this time, chair will entertain a motion to move Resolution twenty twenty-five, two-two-five-two. All right, it's been moved and supported, moved by Commissioner Kuzino, supported by Commissioner Avery. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. That brings us to the reports of our standing committees. There's no report from myself, um, or, um, our vice chair, uh, Community and Economic Development, Commissioner Dr. Beverly Brown, chairperson, Doctor, uh, Commissioner, uh, Wayhill, vice chairperson.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I move Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-one forty-nine, approval of a request by Genesee County's Metropolitan Planning Commission to transfer unspent C D B G funding in the amount of ten thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars from blight and elim- blight elimination to senior center operations.
Support.
All right, moved by Commissioner Brown, supported by Commissioner Wayhill. Any discussion?
Mister Chair, I want to thank Derek Bradshaw for, um, providing me with the information I asked about, uh, during last week's committee meeting.
All right, thank you. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Uh, is there a report from Economic Development?
No report at this time, Mister Chair.
Thank you so much. That brings us next to our Finance Committee. Commissioner Martin Kuzino, chairperson, Commissioner Gary Gatzinger, vice chairperson.
Mister Chair, I plan on moving, um, consent, I, uh, agenda one through twenty unless somebody wants to, uh, bring out something to talk about.
Support.
If we could pull out item twenty, that's all I would like to discuss. So, I will move one through nineteen unless somebody else has another one. I move one through nineteen.
Support. All right. Uh, item one through nineteen has been moved by Commissioner Kuzino, supported by Commissioner Shoemaker. Is there any discussion on, uh, any of the items one through nineteen? All right. Seeing no discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Items one through nineteen have been adopted.
I move Resolution twenty-five dash two-two-eight-nine, approval of a purchase order to Vital Core Health Strategies L L C for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-six, an amount not to exceed five million, five hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents to provide health care services to the inmates housed in the Genesee County Jail. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the accounts listed.
Support.
All right, been moved by Commissioner Kuzino, supported by Commissioner Flouelli. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, I want to first, um, thank Crystal for sending me the information I requested last week. Um, I don't know if it made it to the rest of you, but I had asked what the previous yearly cost was for this, and if you notice, we're at five point five. Last year, we were at four point one million dollars. That's a twenty-five percent increase in that cost. And the reason I bring that up is, we, we obviously have to do this. We don't have any, uh, another option to purchase this. And I think it's an improved policy also, but this is how fast millions of dollars can ex... be extended out from our coffers. So, you know, a lot of times I write everyone that we need to watch every dollar and everything else like this, but this is vital. We have to do this, and there's other things. When we have the opportunity to save, I wish we would, so, um, I just want everybody to know. Twenty-five percent is quite a bit. Every year, we're basically on an average of four percent. That's going to increase up to, I think it was, six million dollars within a few years. And, uh, you know, those are all funds we have to come up with and continue to, so, thank you, Mister Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker. Any additional discussion?
Mister Chair, if I might, um, and I, I've heard this indirectly, but it's, it's my, and this kind of relates, I think, to the cost situation, but it's my impression that the previous vendor, was it A C H? Am I have that right? Um, was not performing nearly at the level that we would want in terms of providing health care for the inmates. Is that, am I, hopefully, I'm not going to get sued for this. We have, I have governmental immunity, right? Uh, but they were not adequate, and so we went out, and this is where we ended up.
Captain Kenimer from the Sheriff's Office, I will tell you that the services have increased through Vital Core. They've done a lot of things, uh, in place with policies to decrease the county's liability as a whole. Uh, when we put this out for R F P, that was one of the biggest things that we considered, is the liability of the county, taking that liability and putting it on our medical provider. In addition to that, to answer some of the previous questions about the contract, when we put it out, we did sign a five-year contract with them, and it's built in a three percent, um, raise every year for inflation on that. But overall, this would have been the cheaper going forward of all the R F Ps on the long term.
So, I absolutely agree with Commissioner Shoemaker, especially with a purchase of this size, that we have to be very mindful of, of how we're spending. Um, I, we can talk about it offline, but there, the liability piece is also something I, I got wind of, um, from someone who's actually working for Vital Core now, um, in the jail. And I think there were, there were, uh, occurrences where, um, things were being done to and for inmates that were not medically appropriate. So, I'll leave it at that. You don't have to say anything more. Uh, so I'm, I'm in favor of the motion.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Yes. Uh, uh, my colleague mentioned some services that actually are going to increase in this, or, or some additional coverage provided. Um, they're going to, uh, moderate an increase, they're going to have an increase to boost nurses' coverage. Um, they rely more heavily on R Ns than L P Ns, which is a big improvement. Implement a more structured and strategic approach to the onsite mental health care, including, uh, a mental health coordinator, which I think is a, a great addition over there, and then a full-time M A T coordinator position, which I do not know what that one is, so...
That's the Medical Assisted Treatment Program. Uh, they help with the... That's the Medical Assisted Treatment Program. Uh, they help with the people suffering through opioid addiction. They monitor and distribute the meds to assist with that program. It takes a lot on, off of the normal medical staff because these meds are controlled. So not only do we have to have special training to administer them, they have to go through a whole protocol to make sure there's no med diversion inside our facility. Uh, so they're in charge of that.
If we could ask the Sheriff's Office just one more thing, in about s- six months or so, if you could come back and give us a report on how the new company is performing compared to where we were before, once they.
So I can speak on that now personally. Uh, they came in and their first day was June first. Uh, they hit the ground running with all, everything they said they were going to do. Uh, I can give you an example of, they have a nurse in our booking area twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, they make contact with any incoming person coming to jail before our staff even does. They start their medical questionnaire, they get a set of vitals, they clear them to make sure they're medically stable to come to our jail. In addition to that, they require their own selves to do a full medical intake within four hours of them being in our facility. Uh, so they're actually doing a full medical intake before my staff can even, in some cases, book them into our jail entirely. Uh, in addition to that, we've run audits on, um, their staff, and they're required to see by MDOC standards, the doctor within fourteen days and have a physical, a full physical done. They're well within a ten-day window of having all the physicals done. So they're doing a phenomenal job. In addition to that, the mental health increase that you mentioned, Commissioner, has been outstanding. As you know, our, our jail is three times above the national average with people suffering from mental health illnesses. Um, and they have constantly invested in their training, their staff, in meeting the needs of the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner, um, Winfrey. Okay. Any other discussion? Any other questions? All right. All right. This item has already been moved. Um, seeing no additional discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Motion passes. Is there a report from the Finance Committee, Commissioner?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Next before us, we have the Governmental Operations Committee, Commissioner Dale Wayhill, Chairperson, Commissioner Sean Shoemaker, Vice Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move Resolutions one through fifteen as a consent agenda, and I'm open to separations.
Support. All right. Been moved by Commissioner Wayhill, supported by Commissioner Winfrey. Are there any separations of item one through fifteen? Seeing no separation, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the consent agenda for government operation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right. Motion passes. Is there a report from the Governmental Operations Committee?
No report.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Wayhill. That brings us to the Human Services Committee. Commissioner Charles Winfrey, Chairperson, Commissioner James Avery, Vice Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move, uh, items one through twenty.
Support.
All right. Been moved by Commissioner Winfrey, supported by Commissioner Avery to move items one through twenty. Are there any separations? Seeing no separations, are there, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing no discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Motion passes. Is there a report from the Human Services Committee? No, thank you. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Winfrey. Next, we have our Public Works Committee, Commissioner Brian Flouelling, Chairperson, Commissioner James Avery, Vice Chairperson.
Mr. Chair, I will move items one through three as consent agenda with separations.
Support.
All right. Been moved by Commissioner Flouelling, supported by Commissioner Avery. Are there any separations? Seeing no separations, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Yep. If we could move item one, or, yes, item one, please.
All right. I'll order that without objection. Are there any other separations? All right. Seeing no, um, is there any discussion on items two or three? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll vote on items two and three, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Motion passes. That brings us back to item number one, Resolution twenty twenty-five, two-two-one-four. Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd, I'd mentioned what I was going to say about this last time. I, I deal in this industry. I think this is far more than we should be spending on this, and I'm voting no on it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion? All right. Seeing no additional discussion, all in favor relative to item number one, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
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 Right. So that's two nays captured. All right. Thank you. Motion passes. All right. Public Works, is there a report from the Public Works Committee? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, before we get to the executive sessions, I'd like to call up our Director of our IT Department, Mike Dewish. Should have come up to talk to us about something exciting that was received by his department, received by Genesee County. And it's better that he share it.
This is embarrassing. I just happen to have this with me.
Yeah.
We, we're a member of Michigan Chapter of GMS, Government Management Information Sciences. Uh, it's a yearly conference that they, they hold, and they have a, um, an assessment of various projects. Our Deputy CIO, Don Stockly, submitted our project for building access and video monitoring as a project, and the, the board voted this the impact of the year project for all the projects that were submitted. I need to mention, Don Stockly had a heavy role in this project.
Just go into a little more depth on what the project was.
Yep. Uh, so, uh, you know, any organization that exists for a long time, like ours, with many buildings and doors, ends up having keys roll around, and they are impossible to track after a while. You have turnover, you have building changes, you, you name it. There's never been a case where buildings' keys don't get lost, and you don't know who does, has access to what door. Never. And so we thought it would be a pretty good idea, as we move into this building, being a showcase and an example for the rest of the county, to convert as many doors as we can to electronic door access, which you can wipe clean anytime you want. You can audit anytime you want, and you can track who went in where at anytime you want. That's not a bad thing. And so you'll never have to worry about, uh, lost keys again, or at least you can really limit them to only the fail-safe ones. So, you know, Ray will store those keys, and they'll be safe, and they'll never get lost. That's a great thing. It's much more secure. Uh, and it's much more guaranteed. If someone needs to get into a door, I don't have to say, well, you know, go visit the locksmith shop and he'll get you the key. No, I can just press a button, and that's a really good thing. Video monitoring, the same way, it's a modern system that stores its information in the cloud, and, uh, you can access it through a, a mobile app, and it can follow people of interest based on, say, give me a person with a red shirt and a Detroit baseball cap, and it'll find them for you, and it'll follow them through wherever they are where we have a camera. That's pretty modern, and, um, it gives us a lot of power, particularly people who are monitoring, um, building access and, and people traversing through the building. It's, it's a lot of great power, and it's mostly also, it's also very simple. It's dumb simple. The old systems require a whole bunch of wires and nuts and bolts and engineers to manage and stuff like that. This does not require that whatsoever. We were able to save administrative overhead on that. We couldn't have ever done it with the, an older system with the staff we have.
Thank you so much. Any comments from members of the commission? Thank you for the awesome work that you and your team do, uh, day in and day out, to do your part to make Genesee County great, and, uh, this facility particularly, just an amazing facility. Thank you for your technical support throughout the building, and certainly during the transition from our former administration building to our new Genesee County Administration Tower. Thank you again, and congratulations to your team.
Thanks.
All right. That brings us to, um, items that we have for closed session tonight. I'll defer at this time to our General Counsel, Corporation Counsel, should I say. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, under the Open Meetings Act, this body is allowed to go in a closed session for certain reasons. Uh, one of which is to consult with his attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litig- specific pending litigation. Tonight, we have two lawsuits we need to discuss in closed session. There's three separate resolution items because the, the first item, the opioid lawsuit, requires two separate resolutions for two separate sets of defendants, and the third one is just a, a separate lawsuit. So, um, the first one is the opioid lawsuit, County of Genesee versus Purdue Pharma Limited Partnership et al. That's U.S. District Court Case Number seventeen dash CV dash one-four-zero-seven-four. And the second case is Cheryl Dodds versus Genesee County, and that's a Genesee County Seventh Circuit Court Case Number twenty-two dash one-one-seven-nine-one-five dash CZ. Um, we can go in a closed session with just one vote. Uh, so I would ask somebody to make a motion to go in a closed session, and we need six votes to be a roll call.
All right. It's been moved to go in executive session by Commissioner Shoemaker, supported by Commissioner Winfrey. Is there any discussion about the motion before us? Seeing no discussion, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Yes.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Gatzinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Shoemaker. Commissioner Kuzno.
Yes.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Yes.
Commissioner Flouelling.
Yes.
All right. So that's nine to zero. We'll enter in the executive session in our tenth floor conference room. We'll do it over in the emergency center. Right out the door, to the right, unless.
I'm sorry. I don't know, actually.
All right, I'd like to call our Genesee County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order at seven oh eight P M. This time, Chair entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of our Corporation Council on Resolutions. Twenty twenty-five twenty-three seventy, Resolution twenty-two-five two-three-seven-one, as well as Resolution twenty-two-five-two-three-seven-six.
Yes.
Do I need to separate them?
Please.
Okay, item number two and three first.
I'll move those.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Shoemaker, supported by Commissioner Flewelling. Is there any discussion? All right, seen no discussion, all in favor, any can be saying aye, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Next, we have item number four, Resolution twenty-two-five-two-three-seven-six, acceptance of Corporation Council recommendation. What's your pleasure?
Support.
All right, been moved by Commissioner Wayhill and supported by Commissioner Gatzinger. Winfrey?
Winfrey.
Yeah.
Okay, Winfrey and Gatzinger look alike, so I knew it was one of you. Okay.
Couple of handsome dudes.
Commissioner Avery. See, that's not so bad, Commissioner Flewelling. I should've called you Gatzinger. Okay, okay. All right, so it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seen no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Yes.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Gatzinger.
Nay.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
No.
Commissioner Kuzno. Commissioner Flewelling.
No.
Commissioner Wayhill, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, you've got five yeses or no's.
All right, the vote is five yes for no, motion passes. Are there any additional comments before we conclude this meeting? All right, seen none.